Good evening, welcome to the September 6th, 2022, meeting in the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the black United States of America and to the developer's standing as foundation of our God, indivisible, and infinite and just.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arns.
Here.
Merrill. McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, with one proposed change, and that would be to move item number 20 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Can we get a motion in a second again? I didn't hear who did that the first.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, we'd then look for a motion to approve the amended full agenda. Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number 25 on the council agenda under special presentations. Tonight, we will recognize a proclamation for September 17th, 2022, as Buddy Poppy Day for the Veterans of Foreign Wars. The proclamation reads as such, whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by government leaders since 1922, and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the VFW is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living, now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 17th, 2022, as Buddy Poppy Day in the City of Norfolk and the surrounding area, and urge all citizens to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Is there anyone here tonight to receive the proclamation? It does not appear so. So we will move on to item number 26 under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing to consider an amendment to enact Division 8.5 to Article 7 of Chapter 27 of the Official City Code to create a tiny house district, to amend various code sections affected by the creation of the tiny house district, to amend various code sections to allow accessory dwelling units in residential zoning districts. And to provide us some background on this, prior to the public hearing, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner. Val.
Thank you. The tiny house district and accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and other amendments to this ordinance have been discussed at multiple subcommittees to receive direction. So the ordinance before you is a result of those subcommittees. So I'll begin with some of the main points from the tiny house district. Much of the information that you hear about tiny houses suggests that tiny houses do well in walkable areas, meaning not just having sidewalks, but access to transit, work, grocery stores, other amenities. Because many tiny house dwellers may not have a vehicle, nor a desire to have one, or have or prefer other modes of transportation. This is also why there is not a parking requirement for tiny house districts. If people do have a vehicle in the district, then they may park on the street. For some specifics, the district begins with a minimum of one acre, in which there are multiple ways to lay out the tiny house neighborhood. The layout options can be, one, a plat is made, so that people may own the land underneath the tiny house along with the house. Two, a layout's approved similar to a mobile home park, or like Andy's Lake, where the lots are leased from the property owner, but another person actually owns the house. Or three, if the property owner wants, they can do a layout option, but maintain ownership of land and houses, and just rent out the houses. As to the tiny house itself, it's defined as a 70 to 649 square foot house placed on a permanent foundation hooked up to utilities. The maximum square footage is the 649, because we currently permit a 650 square foot house in any residential district currently. Part of the ordinance has the adoption of the International Code Council, International Residential Code, Appendix Q, which contains special building codes for tiny houses. But the ICC has tiny houses maxed out at 400 square feet, so if it is larger than 400, then the standard IRC code shall be followed in the building. The second major item in the ordinance is ADUs, accessory dwelling units. You may have heard them called mother-in-law units, or cottage units. These are smaller detached residential units in the rear yards of single-family detached houses, where the property owner either lives in the primary structure, or the ADU. These may be up to 864 square feet, or 60% of the main house square footage, whichever is less, and under the max permitted square footage for total detached accessory structures. There are aesthetics placed on the ADUs, just like our standard accessory structures, such as being architecturally harmonious with the main residential structure in the neighborhood. Some other items in there, since we were touching a lot of sections of code, because these touch pretty much all residential, and we were already there, some other amendments that came up in subcommittees. The first is an item about large lots, and where the comp plan calls for them to be placed. So the proposal amends the RR district intent to have the large lots being against the half-mile outer ring of the ETJ line, so essentially about a mile and a half away from city limits. The comp plan calls for these large lots, quote, "to be in generally undeveloped areas toward the periphery of the community jurisdiction, and located so as to not inhibit any other types of future development." And by being in the intent, it is not an absolute half-mile, but a reminder of the intention of where they potentially can fit into the growth of the community. A couple other brought up at subcommittee was the question came up between RR and SR zoning. There really isn't that much difference between SR and RR, and we hardly ever use SR. So you'll see the proposal to leave SR zoning in the code, as we do have a small portion of land currently zoned that, but to not zone anymore after the date of this ordinance, and just use RR from now on. And then there are some housekeeping items, like revising the land use matrix section code number from 401 to 601, and also, it just seemed to be like, since we were touching so many of them, it was already in that section of code we were touching, so we did that. If there's any questions, I know that's a lot.
Two questions. First one, dealing with the tiny houses. Will those be able to be on the utilities of the existing home, or are they going to have to hook up on their own utilities, as far as sewer water goes?
For the ADUs.
For the ADUs.
For the tiny houses, yeah.
Tiny house district, or ADUs?
When they're built, I guess you call it ADU, yeah, the ADU, whatever, yeah, right, correct.
In the backyard of houses. So those will actually, in the code, they said that they will be hooked up to, and share the utility connection, so no separate meters or anything like that from the main house, so they won't have their own meter or anything.
Okay, so as far as electrical goes, and I don't know if we need it, but you'd be able to meter off your house, then? You'd have to make sure you have enough to answer service to your home to support something like that, if you were going to do that?
I would assume so, if that's.
Okay.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be, immediately tried to be split off as a separate lot, then, that they were actually connected in one lot.
Okay, all right, that's fair. And then, as far as the RR goes, with the half-mile, that is just a suggestion, that's not, I mean, you could still come in and present your development, per se, and, but suggestion would be that you need to be further out, but you still could come up with a development in front of the council or planning zoning, and have that looked at, and to see if it would be approved, even with, right?
Correct, that's why we put in the intent, so it's just kind of a reminder that this is what the comp plan calls for, to be on that periphery of our ETJ, but it's ultimately up to you guys.
Right, thanks, please.
Are they allowed to have basements? Do they have to have basements? Is there anything with that to have to done?
For the tiny home?
For the tiny houses? We don't mention basements, I can't imagine that they would probably have them.
I do have two questions. I have one on the tiny houses, and so, lot dimensions, can I say it's 1,200 square foot for those? And then also, is there a dimension requirement, 30 by 40, or?
So, the lot width is 20 feet, and then the lot area is a minimum 1,200. So we, I pretty much came up with that, of, here's kind of your standard width of, like, a tiny house, if you take off the five feet on each side, and then, if you say, average 400 square feet, so a 400 square foot house with all of those setbacks would easily fit on a 1,200 square foot lot.
So, but the minimum's 20 foot?
Right, yeah.
And then, my other question I had was on the ADUs, just safety questions. I know it can be a separate unit, but can you have a detached garage, and then have a living quarters above that? Is that legal for fire purposes?
Yeah, you'd have to follow the fire ratings and building codes and such, but, yeah, there are living quarters above garages, like a split level, kind of like that, you do have.
Kind of like where Fonzie used to live.
Yeah.
Make sure that's good.
It's good enough for Fonzie. All right, good questions. Any other questions for Val? And Val, just to step back a little bit, this discussion has been had internally for some time, primarily to get at removing regulatory barriers to allow for more of the kinds of housing that we're seeing in demand, and that's smaller units, in higher density settings, like you mentioned walkable neighborhoods and things, neighborhoods that are proximate to amenities and things like that, where, in a lot of cases, you see these types of developments cited. And so, this, I think, is one step towards us trying to meet the challenge of providing truly affordable housing in this day and age. Is it for everyone? Probably not, but there are some people that seem to be attracted to this type of housing form. So that was the purpose behind the tiny home district origination. And then the ADUs, I think, just makes sense to loosen up existing R1 restrictions to allow for these alternative units on the same lot, that maximizes the property value of that lot. So, I just wanted to provide that background. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to comment can do so now. You have to come to the podium if you'd like to speak. Good evening. Yep, there's a form right in front of you, if you would sign your name, please.
Okay. My question is, can the tiny houses be?
Can you state your name, please, ma'am?
Sorry, my name is Charlene Schibl. Can the tiny houses be used as, like, Airbnbs, and have to be lived in?
There is a section in here that talks about some of them, maybe, but not all of them can be Airbnbs. So short-term rentals means 30 days or less, and I believe you can have, like, I want to say 10% of them can be short-term rentals, the rest of them actually need to be lived in.
If you only just put your, like, Brianna, take.
Then I think you can have at least one of them be that, but not all of them. I believe it's 10%.
Val, could you change your zoning, then, to accommodate that? You know, because it could be more of like a motel situation, you know, where you're doing Airbnbs, and you're leasing.
We don't really have anything for just all short-term rentals, unless you actually are putting up a motel hotel, and it'd actually be commercially zoned, because short-term rentals are in residential, and that is a commercial use, really.
What's the 10%? 10% of the?
The units.
Tiny homes in the city, or 10% of each owner?
Of that, that tiny house district. So if they have, yeah, so if they have 10 tiny houses, then one of them can be a short-term rental, or if you have five of them, one of them can be.
Even if it's different owners in that district? That'd be hard to manage, if I'm asking.
Yeah, but, as we plat it, as we put the layout, it's one community, though, you know, and that's how we're looking at it, since it's one acre. So it's really like a multifamily district. And that's what we have for short-term rentals and multifamily currently.
Do you think that Airbnbs are true?
Mm-hmm, yeah. It has been for about a year, you register them with the city, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, so anyone else who wishes to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I'll ask for a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 16th, 2022, to consider approval of an amendment to Act Division 8.5 to Article 7 of Chapter 27 of the Official City Code to create a tiny house district, amend various code sections affected by the creation of the tiny house district, amend various code sections to allow accessory dwelling units and residential zoning districts. Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with an eight to zero vote.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 27, and look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5799, approving an amendment to enact Division 8.5 to Article 7 of Chapter 27 of the Official City Code to create a tiny house district, to amend various code sections affected by the creation of the tiny house district, to amend various code sections to allow accessory dwelling units in residential zoning districts.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5799.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion or questions, council? Okay, before we move on, I just, I want to thank the staff for the work put into this. Again, it was a long process to get this right, but I do think it will be helpful in opening up new areas of the housing marketplace in the city. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to enact Division 8.5 to Article 7 of Chapter 27 of the Official City Code to create a tiny house district, amend various code sections affected by the creation of the tiny house district, amend various code sections to allow accessory dwelling units in residential zoning districts, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5799 carries on first reading.
Honor, hearing no opposition of this ordinance, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules, and vote on second and third.
Second.
Okay, motion second, to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
I'm missing one, I would thank you. All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5799 carries on second and third.
All right, that takes us to our regular agenda, where we will begin with item number 20, would look for a motion to consider Resolution Number 2022-44, approving the final plat and subdivision agreement of River Fork subdivision.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion is second, and for some background on this, again, Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
I'm going to take it, Val.
Or Steve Ramis, our public works director.
Mayor and council, the final subdivision agreement came in just after we submitted the agenda item, and so, well, I'll pull your direction to item seven, or paragraph seven, estimated dates of completion. Those have been modified now to the developers' preferred dates to have in the agreement for completion of grading sanitary sewer, domestic water, and paving. The other change is to, the first two paragraphs of Section 5, grading and drainage. This particular development sits along west of Victory Road, up along the levee, as we were continuing to work on final design with that, with the developer there, and we made some modifications there, recognizing what we can and can't do up against the levee in terms of excavation for stormwater control, and so forth there. So, he's at the bottom end of the drainage system, it's very flat out there, things, it's about a tenth of a foot per, I think, 600 feet or so in there for drainage purposes. So from a water quality perspective, we're very comfortable that, you know, the development is going to develop, the water drainage system in that area will develop the necessary water quality control. And so we're still requiring the BMPs per city code to be applied in that area, but basically, we're just adapting our drainage and grading plan there, in terms of storage on-site and water quality to the conditions for that site, recognizing what we can and can't do up against our levee.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions? Okay, no questions? It's just an approval.
Do I want to substitute, or is it Justice and Justice?
There's a straight approval.
Justice and Justice. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, we'll want a motion to approve this resolution with substituting this subdivision agreement for the one that is included in the agenda packet.
Okay, so we would entertain a motion as such.
I'll make a motion.
Motion second, any further discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2022-44 is adopted.
All right, that brings us to item number 28 on the regular agenda. I would look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the Water Pollution Control Plant Improvements Project.
I'll make a motion to advertise for bids on Water Pollution Control Plant.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, I think we'll hear from Steve Ramis once again, Public Works Director.
Mayor and council, this is, hang on here, let me catch up with you. This is the advertisement for bids for the improvements out the Water Pollution Control Plant. Those include a, what we call our grit facility, overland waste receiving facility, our non-podable water system in the existing aeration control building, including pumps, piping, hydromatic tank and controls, electrical connections, and hydrants, rehabilitation of the north lift station, including replacement of all piping and pertinences, pumps, electrical equipment inside the existing structure, primary clarifier number two, rehabilitation, including cleaning and coating the equipment mechanisms, and rebuilding the drive units. There'll be some slight modifications to our plant SCADA system. Our SCADA system is how we monitor and control the plant, both when we're on-site and when we're off-site. The work includes spare parts associated with that work, SWIP development for floodplain purposes, to include fire marshal and other permitting. The project is set to open bids on October 5th at 1:00 PM. It would be advertised September 9th, September 16th, and September 23rd. These improvements have been in our capital improvement plan for several years. Once in place, these systems would basically double the capacity of our treatment plant at the WPC. So it's a very significant improvement for us, as we continue to grow as a community.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 29, entertain a motion to consider approval to accept a low bid of $65,250 submitted by Norfolk Construction Company for the demolition of the Aeration Basin at Water Pollution Control located at 610 East Monroe Avenue.
Mayor and council.
Just need a second, quick.
Second.
Motion second, and Steve, go ahead.
Mayor and council, this is part of that grit aeration improvement project, as an overall project, we wanted to go ahead and get this particular part of the project bid out ahead, just to speed up construction and simplify it for the contractor on the larger phase. We went out, we received two bids for the project. One was $65,250 from Norfolk Construction Company, the second was $75,000 from Porter. We're recommending award of the bid to Norfolk Construction for $65,250. Engineers estimate on that was right at $60,000.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 30, would look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement with GLMV Architecture Incorporated for Phase 2 Norfolk Police Division Design to expand and renovate the existing building. Motion second, to hear some background on this, we'll hear from Chief Don Miller. To hear some background on this, we'll hear from Chief Don Miller.
Mayor and council, thank you. I'm going to recap just a little bit. This is stuff that you've heard more times than you might care to think about. We've been looking at the challenges we've had at the police station, and we've identified the need to do something with it for the last several years. In 2020, we did a space needs assessment that identified the need to expand the police department. In 2021, we added some of the parking that's necessary, and now in 2022, we've just finished a renovation for a part of the building to the, to accommodate the dispatch center that's been expanded. As we go forward, we're also, the next step for us is looking at, in addition to the east side of the building, this agreement that's in front of you is to do the architectural work for that. Now you're seeing a couple of different name changes for the architectural work. The company that we use for the space needs assessment in Phase 1 was a police facilities design group. They're in the process of merging with a GLMV architecture. That's why this contract says GLMV, but it's still the same architects and employees that we've been using in the past for the first multiple stages of what we're doing. This architectural process, the contract is for $492,810, with approximately 74% of that being paid prior to construction. The idea is that it takes seven to eight months to do the architectural work. We want to, if possible, try to keep our momentum going. We met at subcommittee, and it was determined to use some money from the public safety tax, let me say, make sure I say this right, public safety bonds, to pay for this portion of it. Now, the 74% that would be paid now with the public safety bonds, the remaining portion wouldn't be paid until construction may begin. If for some reason the, the bond issue, or the, the issue in November doesn't pass, this can all sit in the hopper, we can reuse it any time in the future, nothing's going to change. So this is to get the, get the work in place so that if it does pass, we can maintain the momentum, go to bid, and continue that process for taking care of some of the drastic needs that we have at the police station for some, for some expansion. So that's what this agreement is. This is the agreement for your architectural work. While it's a larger amount, 74% of that would be due prior to construction, and the remainder would be after construction. So, any questions?
Is there a limit? Let's say that, that it doesn't pass in November, how long can it sit before they want the rest of their money?
They have verbally told me that they will hold that price for us, because they've already done most of the work. The last portion is just the construction management portion. The heavy work has already been done.
Chief, this process started with this firm some time ago, right?
Yes, it was, it was, we finished the space needs assessment in 2020. We started that probably early, late 19, early 2020, with the same staff. Like I say, there's a name change which might create some confusion, but that's because they're merging their companies.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you Chief.
Right, thank you.
Further discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 31, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number two with JH Hesby Company Incorporated for the Johnson Park North Fork River Restoration Restroom and Parking Lot Project resulting in a net increase of $6,260.
Make a motion to approve the change order number two with JH Hesby Company.
Motion is second. And for some background on this, Steve Ramis, please.
I'm going to pass the baton here to Nathan.
Nate Powell, our Parks and Director.
Mayor and council, thank you. This is to replace the standard door locks with door strikes. This is an electronic mechanism to lock the doors on a timer system. It can be transitioned to a remote locking system if we want at some point. Because this is a year-round facility, it's going to change kind of the way we have to staff it. This would be a savings of about $2,000 a year in overtime, because we don't have year-round bathrooms that we open regularly now. This would also save, PD does our opening, or closing in the evening, so they wouldn't have to do that either. I don't know if it has any dollar savings to them or not, but it would be helpful for them not to have to, you know, have that on their schedule. Is there any questions?
If you're in the facility and it locks, can you get out?
That's correct, yep. It's just a crash bar, it'll run on out.
That's a good question, council.
I figured I had to ask it. If you jam the facility where it looks locked, but it's not?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that you could, I don't know how you would do that. What do you mean?
Can you put something in the system to where it appears that it locked, but it didn't?
That's I think why a remote system might, you know, adding a remote system onto that to tell you that the door is not locked would, might be good, or maybe we put a light or something on it that we can identify. You're talking about if they jam the door?
Right, it's a, it can't lock, it'll be open all the time. And you won't know that.
We could look at something that would, you know, either have a light or something that would turn on outside the building, so you, so you can identify as you drive by.
Safe to say Nate, that any such facility, Russian facilities in the future would probably be, this would be utilized in those as well.
Yeah, especially the annual, the ones that are open year-round, yes.
All right, any other questions?
I don't know that I have a question on the, I see Jim out here, but I think when those lock, it knows whether it went into that, that device. You know what I mean? The locking mechanism that goes into that cylinder, that, that's how it knows that it's actually locked or not. If you're doing it remotely, it would indicate whether it's, am I thinking right, Jim, that it's being left open, I guess, if it's not going into the cylinder that it's supposed to.
Any other comments or discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 32, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with United Contractors Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and End Stream Improvements Project resulting in a net increase of $111,080.
I'd make a motion to approve the change order, or discuss the change order, number one for the $111,080.
Motion is second. And for background on this, hear from Steve Ramis, Public Works.
Mayor and council, the portion of the project that's currently in construction is the river restoration portion. That is, that is a project that substantially involves the placement of large rock boulders into the stream to create a series of eight drop structures. That particular portion of the overall project is estimated at about 4.7 million. Breaking down the contractor's bid of $9,833,000, about 4.7 million of that is related to these rock, eight rock structures. To date, we have completed Structures Number 8 and Number 7, and are in the process of building Structure Number 6. At the end of construction of Structure Number 8, when we tested it, we were getting a lot more fine migration through the boulders and through the, the rocks that are supporting the boulders. To keep that, those fines from migrating through the rocks to the downstream side, we're proposing to build, on the next seven structures, a sheet pile wall at what we call the crest of the structure. The, the purpose of that sheet while, pile wall is to create an impermeable wall to encourage the silts to, to fall out and settle, and help raise the, the river of the bed. In theory, the project and, and the, the plans, if, if you could construct them exactly as the engineer proposed, we most likely wouldn't have this fine migration issue. But in the process of getting down the larger riprap that's watermelon size and bigger, the smaller riprap that's down around baseball size, and then even some of the smaller rock, it creates a system of voids that, using a flowable grout, we're able to get most of it, but just in the process of getting all that rock in place, we're getting a lot of the fines from the river mixed into that rock. And it's impossible for us to get that out. And then when we turn the water on, that water is pushing those fines out. So these seven, these seven sheet pile walls are going to create, create a blockage for that, and that's very critical, that we stop those fines from migrating out in these, in these other seven structures. It's less critical for us on that Structure Number 8, that's the bottom of the system. We're not looking for any change kind of in the slope of the riverbed after that, we're expecting that to stay the same. And, and again, so that, that migration and material isn't as critical for us there. We are, we are going to come back to that wall and put some additional flowable fill in there. But as we go up Structure Number 7, we have put this wall, this, this wall in Structure 7, the sheet pile wall at the crest. They're getting ready to put that in Number 6, depending on how, how this conversation goes. Certainly from an engineering perspective, when, when I look at it, most things we do have a factor of safety and a function of redundancy to them. It's hard in a river system like this to build redundancy or safety factor into this kind of a concept. And so this, this is adding that so that we have security at $4.7 million worth of boulder infrastructure to make these drop structures stays in place, we don't, we don't get scour of the silts and stuff in the river moving through those. The other thing I would, I would say, just to maybe kind of answer a couple of questions there, is this is a unit price contract, and with the first two structures already in place, I would say we've got a cost savings in the project of about 50% of this right now. You know, the boulders that go in are the boulders that are getting measured, and that's what we're paying. And by the time we get to the end, are we going to continue to see that kind of cost savings by, per structure? Maybe, maybe not. Once we get up through the First Street Structures, that would be Structures 4 and 3, it'd be much easier to forecast what's going to happen by the time we get to the end. The Structures 6, 7, and, let's see here, 6, 5, and 4, which are the ones directly downstream of First Street, that's what's creating that beach area just to the east of First Street. Those could have the potential to, to grow a little bit as we get down in there, and just trying to work around the pedestrian structure there. So, as a unit price contract, these do have the ability to go up. In terms of the, the cost per structure there, we're looking somewhere at 100 and, 115, 108, 100 and, let's see, 15 to $18,000 per structure to build that sheet pile wall. One of the questions that was, was asked, and we presented this to a subcommittee, was, you know, shouldn't it have been, or couldn't it have been part foreseen and built into the plans? And yes, it could have been. And in that case, the contractor would have had to apply a lot of thought into, what am I going to be interacting with when I get into that river? What is it going to take for me to put these sheet pile in? Am I going to have stability issues working in that river? The fact that we're coming back in a little bit after the fact to add these, the contractor today knows exactly what those working conditions are, and so the costs that we're getting here from the contractor are very real costs for putting this in. He doesn't have a lot of risk here. He, he knows exactly what it's going to take. So, you know, had it been in the bid, it, it could have been a number 50% more than that or so, just figuring in the contractor's risk. You know, they're not going to bid something, hopefully, that's going to cost them a lot more than what their bid is. But, that's kind of what's going on here, is, is it's specifically downstream of First Street, we're doing a lot of hydraulic grade change there, and specifically these next three structures, 6, 5, and 4, that's where there's a lot of grade change going, and it's extremely important that we make sure we're not getting any scour or loss of fines downstream of those structures. I'll turn it over to you guys for questions.
When you get to the west of First Street, they won't need it?
They would still need them. We would still want them there. There's still grade change going on, you know, in the range of a foot and a half to two feet per structure. So we still, and that's where a lot of the fines are coming that are going to be migrating down. So we still want to control that. We don't want, we don't want these structures to undermine scour and then lose that structure. So, that sheet pile basically goes bank to bank. It's below the boulders, you don't see it, you're not going to ever interact with it. It's not something, it's under the boulders, it's built in to the structure.
Steve, I do have a question. So, with the installation of the sheet pile, do you anticipate the completion date to be changed, moved back?
No, we don't.
Okay.
I would say they're, they're staying on schedule. They're building about one structure a week. So it's taken them right now, the second structure was about a week to get the structure in, and then some testing and stuff after, after the fact, and they go to the next one. So they're progressing on about a structure every two weeks.
And there was only about a 10 to 15% chance of this actually happening, and after the project had started, then we seen what, or the contractors seen what needed to be done.
Correct.
It's kind of an unforeseen, but.
Yeah, the question was asked of the design team, Shane Siegel, river-wise, how often this happens? And in that 15 to 20% of structures, he says that, you know, they have to come back and add these sheet pile walls in.
And Pat Boyle has done this before, correct? Didn't he?
Pat Boyle is, yeah, he's the, he's our construction engineer on, on the project. Pat actually built the structure that's there. He was involved in the, in the construction of the structure on First Street right now. There's an existing sheet pile wall just like that incorporated into that structure.
Do you feel the spillway that's in place right now gives enough hydraulic pressure that this is causing this? And once all of these are in place, you really don't have that issue? Because it's gradual the whole way, rather than water being shoved down a spillway across First Street?
I think, I may not, I may not answer that correctly, but I may not understand the question correctly. But, but yes, you know, if, if you envision that these sheet pile going from bank to bank, anything in terms of, once we put the rock behind the sheet pile, and, and grout those in, and then turn the water back on, the only way for the water to get to the other side of the sheet pile is to fill up and go over the sheet pile. You can't go through or around and take the fines with you and create voids that are going to.
Right, I'm, I'm just wondering with the, the spillway that's in there right now at First Street adds to how fast that water is moving down the river? Or maybe it doesn't, I don't know, compared to where they're testing this at Number 8 or Number 7 structure, being, since that's all the way down to Norfolk Avenue.
I would say it really doesn't.
Is it slowing down, or is it still going as fast as we see it going down the spillway that's causing this as an issue?
The biggest, the biggest component of velocity is going to be the width of the channel that's going through there. So you've got the same amount of water coming through, and once that water comes over the spillway and down the chute, you know, that channel widens up substantially. And so that velocity that is created coming over the chute is dissipated as a function of the width of the channel. I don't see any, any concern there, long-term.
Which Gary, got to your question about whether it was needed on the drops.
And so again, as we, as we build these, you know, right now, I would say we've probably seen in the realm of $50,000, and I'm not going to say cost savings, but just in terms of the material we've used to date, we're about $50,000 to the plus as we go forward from here. Again, as we get into these next, these next two or three structures, they're going to be the biggest structures on the site that are creating that whole beach area. I'm pretty confident that the way it's designed, they designed it a little heavy, and so I think there's plenty of quantity there. If anything, I would expect to concede a little bit of savings on each one of these structures as we. structures as we build them. So, I think in the end, even though we're adding one hundred and eleven thousand here, in the end, it could be a net zero by the time we're done, just as a function of the quantities that we use.
Any other questions, council? Or discussion? Okay.
I'm a little critical to say the infrastructure of what we're building.
At four point seven million without these, yeah, that infrastructure would be at significant risk. With these, there's essentially no, no risk.
Mechanism to preserve and secure the investment.
Like I say, it's a function of redundancy and safe, safety factor.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that is all that is listed on the agenda. We are adjourned.